Call to order this October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Blair Mayor and City Council. I am Mindy Rumpf, Mayor of Blair, and I am pleased that you have joined us this evening. This is a public meeting and you are part of the process. I encourage you to participate, ask questions, and share your thoughts. I want to you to be feel- to feel comfortable and I will do everything that I can to make sure that your voice is heard. We do have several rules to help us proceed with the meeting and I ask that you please keep them in mind. Please turn off your cell phones. If you need to take a call, step outside the chamber. When you wish to speak, simply raise your hand and I will acknowledge you and you can come forward to the podium. Brenda Wheeler, our city clerk, must record who you are, so please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address. Keep your remarks brief, about three minutes, so that others have the opportunity to speak. And please, this is of the utmost importance, you must direct your remarks to either myself, to city council, or to city staff. A copy of the Open Meetings Act has been posted by both exits, and we will begin this evening with the roll call of members.
Mayor.
President.
Allison.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Will.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Letter.
Yep.
Echo.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. If you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Please register your vote.
All councilmembers, present and voting aye.
Motion passes. Before we go on to item number five, just a couple housekeeping things. Obviously, a lot of you are here tonight for agenda item number five, at least I'm assuming that, unless you're here to share your thoughts about the Bobcat tool cat for the Parks Department, which you're welcome to do. But keeping that in mind, we are going to keep it two, three minutes when the public wishes to come forward and speak. And as the evening progresses, if someone is at the podium and is sharing your similar thoughts, we still want to make sure that your voice is heard, so please feel free to come up and state your name, spell your last name, and state your address, and then simply just say whether you are for or against the conditional use permit. And that will keep the evening moving a little faster. And also, I would like to remind the public that when someone is at the podium, to reserve your comments before, during, or after they are speaking, and also to refrain from applauding. This is a public hearing and not a music concert. Thank you. All right, moving on, item number five. I will open the public hearing to consider a conditional use permit submitted by Ken Grubert of Omaha Rapid Response, nineteen twenty-five Soren Drive in Blair, Nebraska, to allow the use of residential accessory structures by a private charitable institution for an office, meeting, and training rooms, and equipment storage, per any restrictions or requirements of the Nebraska State Fire Marshal on tax lot one twenty-five, part of tax lot one twenty-three, located on the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter and the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section Two, Township eighteen north, range eleven east of the six P M, Washoe County, Nebraska, for ten years. Mr. Byerman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'd like to make a motion and receive and place on file the public comments received via the city clerk, email by the end of the business day, October twenty eighth today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place on file any of the correspondence that we've received.
Thank you.
Sorry, I jumped on top of that.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. Two items carried over from Planning Commission. First is number five, the conditional use permit request by Rapid Response. Located here in the north part of the city of Blair, nineteen twenty-five Soren Drive is the main entrance. Zoning district is RL residential low density. Property is surrounded by the ag district, RM residential medium district, and residential low districts. Their request is for ten years. Planning Commission did not recommend approval by a vote of seven to one. Little bit about this, this is an exception under the parent district. It shows the list of items that can be voted on with a CUP. Number three, public and private charitable institutions, is what triggered their ability to apply for a CUP. Moving on, this is the location of property right here, just on the north tip of Blair, inside our city, even though it juts out like this. The yellow line, green line, is the border of not only the parcel, but of the city limits. Shows the different neighborhoods in the area. Deerfield Platteau here, here is the entrance. Pine Wood Estates has houses up in this area. They're all RL. All of them come out of this cul-de-sac. Here's another zoning overlay that shows the RM districts here, RL. And then down here, where the other entrance is, is Joanne Drive. They are also RM residential medium density. Couple quick other pictures. This is the entrance off of Soren. This shows, this actually is city of Blair property, the lift station back in this area. But this is all, again, city property. Fifty-foot wide entrance there, something that may be needed for a road as the city moves up to the further north and that land is developed. Their entrance typically, actually is right here, crossing Sudbeck ground right here, and the actual entrance is right there. Going from here, comes across a bridge, a right turn gets to the compound with the house and buildings. This here is the road that goes across the north. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. This shows the different properties around the area. This is Rapid Response here. Their north road, as we talked about, exits their property here, goes across the Camden Inn. Please correct me if that's wrong, I apologize. Across the Viskerna property, across the little sliver of the city of Blair Park, and then does enter the city or enter the roads through Joanne Drive at the cul-de-sac. Again, here's the different properties, Viskerna, Camden Inn, Rapid Response, Joanne Drive here, leading it to North Tenth Street. That's just a quick picture without any of the overlay. Again, entrance out here, and then over here. This is provided by them. This is building A parking, building B, and this parking here with ADA accessibility. Couple pictures of the building themselves. This is the building A, B, and this is the entrance off of Soren Drive. That is the main entrance. That is what the entrance is for their legally, for them to receive their mail. If there is any easements or for the north entrance, we do not know about them. We have not searched too deep in it, but just a cursory look, we were unable to find easements. Of course, easements are private contracts between landowners to move across. With that, any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the applicant is here. Would you like to come forward?
We should slide it off to left or right on this area. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilman. As you, as I go through this, you've got a packet of information here. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the things we, that were brought up in the planning board meeting that weren't, that we can address, and even some new information. So, if you go to page two, I have to tell you that I was not in favor of the information that was put up there by me, but I was counseled by my wife and a few others that they said they need to get to know you, because there were some questions about myself and my board, that there might be some questions about that. But there's some of my background. Who we are is a nonprofit. We're founded in two thousand by members of over fifty churches. We've had, the thing that's gotten kind of out of hand is that people think that we're a central international organization, that we're going to be bringing all these people in. That's not the case. We, this is our administrative hub. We're not going to have that many people here in this property. It's what we do is to support the disasters that are around the world. So, we have had, this last year, we've probably had more traffic than we've ever will have up there just because of the tornadoes in the spring and windstorm on August ninth. We had traffic when we moved in, and then January, February, March, we had traffic for when we were rebuilding, remodeling the middle building into a little training center. We're in good standards with the IRS and Nebraska's Secretary of State. Our annual filings are completed and available. We currently have two full-time employees, myself and my vice president. And if you've got any questions about any of that other stuff. But the first, I've been involved with Rapid Response after twenty-five years in public safety. I started in the year two thousand and six, and the first fourteen years, I was a volunteer. I didn't get paid. I don't believe in debt, so I wasn't in debt, and I was able to do that. And then after the floods in two thousand and nineteen, we found out from some of our grant writers that they would not give us grants because we weren't supporting financially our staff. And so, our board president made a recommendation, and so they've actually started paying me since sometime later in two thousand and twenty. The property at Soren Drive, we have offices, administration, equipment storage. We have no new construction or expansion plan. That was a little misnomer. We had just, we'd put out in the earlier this year that we were hoping to maybe help the community around here if a disaster happened with the, with dormitories and a kitchen, that we could feed them and all that kind of stuff. But that's out the door because we'd have to get, that's real expensive. We'd have to run new water lines and a septic system and all that. We are in city water. We do have septic system there, and so that's shelved. If you look at, if you look at this property here, on the left is a bigger view. So you can see that our property is over half, our property line is over half buffered up against agricultural property. And then on the right, as Jeff showed you earlier, you can see where we come in and to come around. But we are so far removed from the neighbors that we really don't have a lot of stuff going on. We can't really hear the neighbors. The only time we hear the neighbors is a couple of weeks before Fourth of July because the fireworks were going off and sound traveled over the trees, or when most of the neighbors had their roofs replaced. And so, we have quiet operation. We probably have two or three people there a day. It's basically not any different than somebody that has, that's a homeowner that has teenagers. You probably have less traffic than any single homeowner, you know? So, and we have lower traffic than previous owners. So, another thing that was brought up in the Planning Commission meeting is like, who are these people that are coming in here? Well, most of our core group that comes up there, we have doctors, we have nurses, we have teachers, we have a school principal, we have business owners, some of the best people that have the most integrity and character of anybody I know. We vet the team leaders that come in and do background checks on them, and our chaplains. We, all of our certified chaplains are all doing a background check on them too. So, when we go to disasters, we not only identify what their physical needs are, but also their mental, emotional, and spiritual needs too. So, to the next screen. So, our closest neighbors, one of them testified here last time, and we have the quote of the other one. So, as you look here on the left, the two people that know us more in terms of our traffic, they said there's a lot of traffic. We have not hardly done any traffic in this neighborhood in the last year. I made some examples a little bit earlier. But the only people that can really see it is maybe four houses on one side and four houses on the other. Can see actually traffic going in our property. And so, the traffic, they said they got to weave in and out of traffic in their property, in their neighborhood. That's not us. We will never park in that neighborhood. And we had to weave in and out of traffic because almost everybody had their roof replaced, or there was a graduation party, or there was a football party, or there was something like that. That's the traffic. And a lot of times they're parking on both sides of the street, so that's not us. We only have a few vehicles that maybe go in and out of there every day. So, a lot of people, they came up and testified there's a lot of traffic. But, you know, everyone's concerns are valid, but we respectfully submit that a lot of people got inaccurate information and it snowballed from there. So, you can see that the entrance on the rock there, we always tell people to go to the rock when they're coming in. And Mr. Warwick on the left side, you can see his house up there. He's in his yard constantly, and we've got to know him. And he testified, he says it's less than when Lipicott and Bob Woodhouse had that property there. So, the reason that we didn't do a cup, I mean, the mayor was at a fire department meeting that I talked at in the spring along with Phil Green, and Phil Green said we could be in a pickle about why we were there in low-density residential. And I didn't think nothing of it because I knew the previous owners had done business out of there. And there was individuals that testified that we know Bob Woodhouse and Lipicott, and so do I, and they don't do business out of there. Well, we're going to say that they're inaccurate or they just don't remember. But we have testimonies here from the two neighbors that impacted the most with the impact of the traffic that comes in off of Soren Drive. So, the parking and noise, our bridge is limited, it's a single-lane road. It's a twenty-six thousand pound limit with posted signage, which is fairly new that we just put up. Our big building, as most of you know, is for storage and to base out of there to send equipment and donations and that kind of thing to the disaster sites for people in need. It's controlled access, like I said, no neighborhood parking, low-impact traffic pattern, and I talked about the location there. Then we have the neighbors in the back that said, hey, you're not informing us that you were there. And by law, we only had, the city only had to inform people within three hundred feet. That's how far we're removed from all the neighbors. And so, some people told us that they were not happy with that, that we didn't get known, that they didn't know about what was going on with us up there and that we were an entity. But we counted how many trucks that we had delivered on that back road because semis can't come in the front. So, we've had some deliveries from, for when we were remodeling some, and then we have, we had some other things from the disasters. We had Heartland Hope Mission drop off a bunch of totes for people to give out to the people out there in the field. And so, we counted, actually, this last year, twelve trucks. Now, that doesn't include that the week that we decided to, after two months of doing tree damage in and around Blair, we said we're going to take a week, and we lost a hundred trees that were damaged or destroyed. And we cleaned off the back road. There was a lot of damaged trees. We've been pushing trees off to the side over the winter time that collapsed during the winter because we couldn't have people come in there, and our garbage truck comes in that way. They can only come in that way once a week. So, we don't hardly have, so like I said, the backyard usages, we had twelve trucks this year that we can document, plus our weekly trash, and sometimes the staff, when I go back there to make sure the condition of the road, and we're getting ready to pave that. We have no, we have zero parking in the back other than, we had a couple of our excavator and our forestry mulcher dropped off in the back to do that work in the back for a couple days. It was testified that they couldn't work in their house, somebody in the back there. But when she built the house, she realized she was against a farm field. And the same week that we were doing all the equipment in a backyard and doing chainsaws, they were harvesting beans and corn and stuff like that in the backyard. And so, that trumped all of our noise. In fact, I couldn't believe, I thought it was us making that much noise, but it actually combines in the front and the back. So, we have three or four vehicles daily, maybe, sometime, but most of our work is, ninety percent is administrative stuff. So, computer stuff, and emails, and phone calls, and setting up things like we're doing this week for Jamaica and getting some people together to go to Jamaica. We're still looking at trying to send a team up to Alaska from the tsunami, from the typhoon that hit two weeks ago. So, this is just a coordinated place. It's not where a ton of people are going to come out of. It's never going to be our forward operating base unless a tornado hits Deerfield or someplace in there so that we're not clogging up the neighborhood with traffic. They would probably come to our location and then base out from there to go help the neighbors around here. Legal compliance and city partnership, we followed Blair City ordinance. Some people said, why didn't you do this first? We didn't think we had to, because we knew that businesses were done out of this property before. And so, even when I talked to Phil, and I wish Phil was here today, even though Mr. Green was, I'd met with him in the spring, he never did say that I had to fill out a couple application. He said, you might be in trouble. He said, but if none of the neighbors complain, you're good to go. And so, really, it didn't start talking, people didn't start talking about us until we're on the front page of the Washington paper in the middle of August. And it's not like we're trying to hide. We want people to know that we're there because we're a resource to the community, and we have nothing to hide. So, we've done all the required notices. We had fire marshal review. We've already put in exit lights and exit signs. We've already identified another exit we need to put in the big building, even though it's not occupied. But because of the size of the building, it had to have a second exit. And just doing the things that it was approved by the fire marshal out of Fremont, and we are in the process of finishing up some of those things there too. Just touch on, you know, the community impact from the derecho. We just have some of the people that, and some pictures of some of the stuff that we did. Like here's an example, the four lower pictures are all from Country Estates. We just set up tables out there, so we didn't have people come to the property. We had people go to Country Estates. That's our forward operating base, so that's where the work is happening. So, we sent all of our equipment there. We set up with, we have, you see the totes that we had that we brought up for people, and then we did a lot of tree damage, and we ended up demoing quite a few homes. So, if you've got any questions about that, I won't go over the details of that. Economic community benefit, one thing that we've heard is the big difference between us and the two previous owners of this property is that we're nonprofit. And so, we saw, we heard that a few people got their feathers rustled, ruffled up because we don't have to pay property tax. And, but the savings that we do to the community, I mean, we, the local economic activity, since we've been here in the last fourteen months, we figured out it was over two hundred thousand dollars in fuel purchases and all the spending for food and everything for teams and supply and procurement for disaster relief and for the remodeling that we did for the training room there. We've had, I think it's actually closer to a thousand volunteer hours, but here we just had over five hundred volunteer hours. And then after the August ninth storm, we helped twenty-two different homes with victims' tree removal and homes demolished. And so, that's just here in Blair and Washington County. So, we estimated from the cost that it was, we saved the city and the county about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in dump fees because we have our dump trailers and we fill them up and we take them to a private area. We didn't even use any of the city's three dump areas. We take care of it ourselves. And so, the city didn't have to do that, and we didn't, the government, whether it's the county or the city, didn't have to get involved in any demolitions. We do it all for free. We've never charged one cent in twenty-five years. We don't do that. We're, this is an organization, it's a ministry actually, is what it is, and God has taken care of us financially all these years. And so, we want to pass on that blessing and not put a burden on anybody about any of the work that we do in terms of financial responsibility. As I'm finishing up here, so our legal and compliance standings, we've talked with the police department and the city of Blair, and we just said anything, has there been any violations, any complaints in Deerfield in the roads before us and our property for any kind of violations? We hardly have any vehicles that go through there. People can see that we have two vehicles with our tags on it. The rest of the people saying, there's all this traffic. There's new homes being built there. There's new property. There's new things going on. We don't have anything compared to what the school does. You know, we actually try to avoid that area at eight o'clock in the morning and three o'clock in the afternoon because it's crazy how they come in and they go through the library and they go down the street, and it's just nuts. They look, they seem respectful of everybody, but we don't add to that. We don't add to any of the traffic violations whatsoever. In fact, most people that we've talked to, that through the open house or to people that we've met before, they said, we didn't even know you were there. You don't even, there's like been no impact whatsoever. And so, we've shown for fourteen months that we really haven't had any impact, and it's been a few people saying, oh, the traffic's bad. been a few people saying, "Oh, the traffic's bad, the noise is bad," all this kind of stuff. And it's, and then the facts are not. We've actually got new, uh, we've, uh, repositioned our cameras or whatever. And so people that are coming in through the sore and drive or through the back and they make a cut-through and go over the bridge because it's a shortcut from the back, we see that in some delivery trucks. Do we have some deliveries there once in a while? Once in a great while? Yes. But a lot of them just make a cut-through there. So now we got cameras set up. That, I'm offering to any of you, if you wanna give me your email or whatever, you can actually monitor this camera yourself. Uh, I'm offering that to you. Because we have, we have nothing to hide and I wanna be able to show everybody, this is the facts. This is not the fear that's being thrown around out here and getting people riled up and, because it's fear-based information, it's not accurate. Um, so we have fewer than five staff, no large public events or regular visitors. Uh, we even found out that, uh, somebody had said, "We had a, a party there, a pool party or a music party." That wasn't us. We found out that in Pinewood, which is actually the closest, uh, the closest neighbors, uh, Mr. Woodhouse built a big berm and you can't, you only see one house. It's really the trees and everything there, there's really no sound. But we did hear music over the summer one time and we thought, we thought it was the concert that they had down in the, uh, the, uh, the new park down, the Generations Park, uh, because I know the group that was playing down there. But then one of the neighbors come and said, "No, I had a live band in my backyard in Pinewood." And so I assumed that that was what it was. It wasn't us. We haven't had parties there, we don't do big loud parties, we don't do anything like that there. Um, so during normal business hours, the chainsaw operation, most of that stuff's out there. But did we take a, um, a week to like cut down? We, we lost over 100 trees. We had, uh, we spent two months helping everybody else. I said, "Let's take this week and do the trees that we need to do in our neighborhood." We still have some work to do. So we heard about property values. Uh, we've done a study that the property values have not gone down. In fact, uh, some of the property values have increased even though, uh, generally speaking, property values have gone down or stagnated in the last year or two. Um, but since there's been businesses there on this property for 26 years, the property values have always gone up. They've either leveled or gone up in 26 years. And even in this last year, uh, that's the case. Um, and so, uh, as I finish up here, uh, if you don't mind, I would like to, uh, because people were questioning, uh, what we talked about in terms of, uh, you know, having, uh, no business was there before, uh, and that, uh, we make more traffic and more, uh, the things that are going on, more noise. And they, uh, a couple gentlemen got up and said, "I know Bob Woodhouse and them and there's, there's, they didn't do any business out of here." I would like to bring up and introduce you to Mr. Bob Woodhouse, who is here with us this evening, and he can tell you what kind of businesses that he ran out of here.
Refreshing to be back here. Excuse my voice, it's always this way nowadays. Mayor, Mayor Ronf, Councilman. I don't have any pictures to show you up there, but...
Bob, would you spell your last name and state your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Woodhouse, W-O-O-D-H-O-U-S-E. And, uh, what was the other thing I needed to share?
Your address.
Pardon?
Your address.
Uh, 1925 Soren Drive, Fort Worth, Texas.
[laughing]
Yeah, yeah, I had to drive fast today to get here. Any case, uh, Kenny asked me to stop and visit with y'all in case you had questions about how this all came about. And I've got stories that could last all night and I won't go there. But, uh, yeah, I purchased that in 1999, 13 acres, no access, uh, on any side. And, uh, went to the neighbors to find out if they'd extended the driveway. They said, "No, we don't wanna do that." Okay. So it ended up going, came to the city, Brandon Wheeler and a few of those folks helped me out and said, "Yeah, we'll extend that pump road." There was a, there's a lift pump right there on 1925 Soren Drive. And they gave me the permission to extend that and, uh, I forget the name of the farmer right next to it. He gave, um, an easement for a little triangular piece there to get in from and then built the, built the bridge to get across the creek. And, but the problem with that is, this, this property needs two accesses because you can't get anything big in there otherwise. Semi won't cross there, the bridge is only worth 26,000 pounds. So you have to have a back way in, which is the way we were getting to it before the fr, the front drive was built. Um, I was studying some of the information and it looks like I was building that prior to some of the folks that have issues. So I guess, I mean, I don't know, you got, you're all familiar that laws are, you can't deny people access to their property. That's kinda, I don't know, statute somewhere. I don't have it with me, but, in any case, we came in on that dirt road in the back and the guy at Cavendish, and I think the fellow that owns it now, it might've been his dad back then. But, uh, Cam, he, didn't he run a glass eyewear here in Omaha at the time? I remember making the phone call and saying, "Hey, you've got a dirt trail up there on the bluff. Would you mind if we use that to get to that property?" And he said, "I didn't know I owned that." And I said, "Yeah, you do." And they said, "Yeah, we'll let you use that." It's, and I don't have anything written down on that, but he said, "Go and go for it." He says, "I didn't even know I had it." But, so we improved it a little so it could be used, but it's still, you know, potholes and mud and you can't drive, that's not appropriate. Plus it's a mile long. Um, I had something else I wanted to share with you and then I'll shut up. Um, oh, yeah. So, I can't remember the, who the mayor was at the time, but, anyway, the property was not city property until three months after I bought it. And then he said, "You're going to the city. We need that," you know? So that was, uh, outside the property at the time this all happened, okay? Unless there's questions, I'm outta here. Okay?
Out of your business.
Oh, uh, yeah, I, I didn't share anything, but I ran the Woodhouse Performance, Inc. off of that. That's why the big building happened. Um, I used, I ran race cars, two Vipers across the nation for about eight years and, uh, we did accessory business out of that shop, you know, it's exclusive to the Viper. Plus we maintain our race cars in there. So if you would've heard any noise, it would've been back then. [mimicking engine sound]. You know, they're pretty noisy, but, uh, we, that happened for the first, we had about six employees, maybe at the, at the height, usually about four. And, uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Woodhouse. Thank you, sir. Other comments from the public?
I got a question for Mr. Gruber. A question, if you don't mind me, please.
Yes, sir.
You were in Omaha for over 20 years, correct?
Uh, for Rapid Response.
Rapid Response.
Yeah, we were in Elkhorn, uh, and Papillion in Omaha, yeah.
I was just curious, um, why did you relocate to Blair?
Uh, the property. Um, we had eight different storage facilities around Douglas and Sarpy County and, uh, we just needed to find a place that we could do some training, but mostly to, that big building was the big draw to us, that we could, uh, have our storage there, our donations come in, uh, and then a place that, uh, it just happened to have a house so that as, we could have property manager there, which would be the leaders of Rapid Response, and that, uh, somebody's there to take care of the property, security-wise and upkeep and management-type stuff. Then we weren't, when we have a disaster, we weren't going all over the place looking for our equipment here, our donations here, whatever, it was in one location and we could be more efficient while we were doing.
Did you look at any other properties?
Oh, we've been looking for eight years, actually, yeah. The last one we were looking at was out by Ashland. Uh, and that fell through like the last week, uh, somebody came in with a cash offer and beat us out, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned kinda quickly that you were gonna talk about paving the North Road.
Uh, no, pay, uh, uh, we, uh, we got a bid from Hinton, but he was crushed at, crush asphalt for 17,000. I go, "Uh, no, how about crush concrete?" So he hasn't got back with me. So we're actually, uh, we've got some tree damage, uh, still on the ground that we gotta move out of there and grade it out a little bit. And then we're gonna, uh, like Mr. Woodhouse had put a mat down on that whole road. It's about three-quarters of a mile. And then, uh, and then he had put gravel in there, but, uh, Lipicott never did put gravel on it, so it's time to get gravel back on it because it's kinda pretty muddy back there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I timed and re-timed this. My name is Margaret Bulian, B-U-L-B-U-L-I-A-N. I live at 1234, not the back road, Joanne Drive in Blair, Nebraska. I'd like to quote from the Blair Comprehensive Plan, the latest one, quote, "Community facilities, including institutional uses, should be designed and operated to mitigate adverse impact on adjacent residential areas to maintain health, safety, and welfare of the community." The online domain name for this organization is rapidresponseamerica.org. They purchased a residential process with the express purpose of converting it to institutional use. Their own quotes with print and broadcast media, as well as their social media posts, use the terms "international headquarters," "operations base," "campus." They claim to do, quote, "A lot of hands-on training," quote, "Advanced life support training," quote, "Offer places for people to stay so they won't need hotel rooms." They bus students in for service hours and house volunteers for week-long projects. The organization is neither designed or operated in accordance with Blair's Comprehensive Plan, nor have they complied with zoning regulations which state that noisy or hazardous operations must be set back 200 to 500 feet from the residence zone A1 or R1. Further to the noise and safety issue, the emergency turnaround, sometimes called the cul-de-sac, the emergency turnaround has become an unloading zone, a place to leave semi trucks and heavy equipment for days. The gravel road where RRA has directed delivery drivers or trainees to traverse is a narrow road with steep drop-offs. Joanne Drive has inconsistent sidewalks. Thus, we have kids riding bikes, dog walkers, senior citizens walking in the road on a daily basis. Drivers unfamiliar with our street put residents in harm's way. I have a copy of a formal complaint filed with the city of Blair, October 13th, 2025. It includes RRA's own social media posts which clearly show how the property has been used from January to October 2025. They scrubbed their website since the planning commission meeting, but we have screenshots to document the scope of the land use for institutional purposes. The applicant, with all due respect, changes their answer to fit whichever group they are addressing. All anyone has to do is due diligence of the actual quotes, their advertised land usage, their YouTube videos, their media interviews, and their actions. If the applicant did quote-unquote "want a choi, chance" to show us their good neighbors, they have had months to show us who they are and they have. Since last spring, when they were notified that they were violating zoning regulations, they have persisted in knowingly disregarding the city and the tax-paying residents.
Ms. Bulian, I'm gonna remind you, it's been three minutes.
Okay, good. I'm gonna hand off my last two sentences.
Go ahead.
You want me to say them?
Yep.
Okay. They have already shown the city and neighboring properties what they will do. I ask the city to carefully consider the land use precedent it will set if it allows this CUP or spot zoning to be granted in any configuration. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
I hope you'll understand why I won't give my address, but I'll let you know that I am a Deerfield resident. Being an elected official, uh, I am not on GIS and so I'd rather not have to give that information out. I hope the city council and mayor will understand.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. What I wanna talk about is, uh, process and application. I've been aware and did some research here regarding what has been said and, and some of the noise complaints. Um, obviously I deal with the planning commission on a regular basis and when you have a planning commission that goes ahead and gives you a vote of this matter of seven to one against, I think that should carry weight with the city council. It certainly does with our county board. What we run into sometimes, uh, very rarely, is a situation where the county board will find new information or develop new strategies as to what has happened since the planning commission, and they will make sometimes some determinations as to going against what is normally given. Your planning commission is an extension of this body. Their sole job is to make sure that they vet and they look at the things that come through here on applications. It is their job to then pose those recommendations to you. It's very clear here what their recommendation is, and that would be to deny the CUP. When you look at what is going on here, at least as far as I'm concerned, we need to separate, I think, the message of the mission and the individual from the actual CUP. I would agree with the person who just spoke is that the CUP in this case is inconsistent with not only the city comprehensive plan, but the actual planning zoning of that entire area. The individual in this case, I have, I don't, I've not met him and I'm, I'm not familiar, but I do know that when I worked on the tornado and the disaster relief, that they were a part of that. I absolutely respect that mission and I'm sure Mr. Gruber's a very nice individual. That doesn't mean that we should give him some sort of credence in order to have an inconsistent designation in a purely residential area. So with that, when we talk about why, that, that's really where I'm at, is why would you think in a residential area you could do this? Now, the answer seems to be, "Well, I just assumed because two other people had the property ahead of me and that I just didn't need to do anything." What strikes me as odd, because, uh, any organization that's been in business has a corporate structure the way that they do here, seems to me that they would've done due diligence to ensure that if they were going to go ahead and find that, now it's not, it's pretty obvious when you drive through that neighborhood exactly what that place is. And if the idea is that, "Well, hey, listen, we think we can do this because somebody was doing business," I'm here to tell you there are a lot of people in this county that violate zoning every single day. I just don't know about them. And when we find out about them, they're prosecuted. But in this case, saying, "Well, if you violated zoning, I can violate zoning too," doesn't seem to make sense. Now, assuming that there was that assumption that I couldn't actually, I could do what I wanted to do, it still seems to be inconsistent with what the words are even here today, that Mr. Green indicated he might have a problem. Again, I assume that the organization has attorneys, I assume the organization has a structure that they can go and research these things, but that doesn't appear to have been the case. I think that when you're looking at this application, the whys seem to add up. And when they start to add up and there aren't any answers, that's when somebody like me gets concerned. I would also suggest that in the event that you decided not to go with your planning commission, the application itself is vague. I will tell you this, words, presentations, I see them, I, I just did at a prior meeting. And, uh, people saying, "Hey, I won't do this, I promise you, I'm not gonna do that. Check out this study I did." None of that means anything if it is not a restriction in your CUP. And I can tell you that firsthand, because I have to deal with that on a regular basis. We've had many entities in the county that have violated CUPs, that have actually gone ahead and done where they, they go ahead and do instead of make application. And this is a perfect example of asking for forgiveness instead of permission. Certainly could've come here and said, "As soon as there was an issue, hey, let's try to clear this up. Let's get out into the neighborhood."
Mr. Van Der Schaaf, if you could finish your...
I will finish up, thank you, mayor. If you in fact wanted to go through that process, you certainly could've. Uh, again, I would just ask you to concur with your planning commission. I think they've done their due diligence and deny the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Hello, my name's Brian Bogdanoff. I reside at 2011 Soren Drive. I served as an Omaha police officer for over 20 years. I worked uniform patrol, undercover narcotics, and the homicide division. I'm here to address several safety concerns affecting our community. My prior law enforcement experience gives me extra insight into these issues. The Blair Comprehensive Plan highlights a particular sensitivity to residential areas with traffic patterns. The plan explicitly states that commercial and industry vehicles should not pass through residential neighborhoods en route to their destination. It also stresses the need for a transportation system designed to provide safe and convenient access for both pedestrians and vehicles, especially in residential zones with the presence of children and limited roadway accessibility. Heightened safety measures should be used. The goal is to prevent accidents and protect the well-being of the community. Studies by the Urban Institute have shown that institutional use increases traffic by 20% to 50% in residential zones. Additionally, pedestrian injury rates rise from 25% to 40% in areas with mixed land use to include industrial traffic. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, a typical residence household with two people generates an average of two to four vehicle trips per day in low-density zones. In contrast, the proposal made on the CUP would generate 50 to 100 daily trips during active periods, representing substantial increases in volume, and that would be based on previous statements that they've made in social media. Current issues already exist due to the elementary school with drop-off and pickup activities which contribute to increased traffic and associated risks. Over the past 10 days, I personally have walked the car line at Deerfield during pickup times and spoken to numerous families about the potential increase of traffic should the CUP be approved. None of the families I spoke to support the CUP, all citing concerns about their children's safety. Additional issues: The walking trail that enters Deerfield brings significant foot traffic to the neighborhood. Both the school and Generations Park contribute to higher traffic volumes in the area. Sidewalks that are missing undevelopment or are undeveloped force pedestrians to walk in the street. Existing sidewalks are narrow, causing groups of people to walk in the street. On Joanne Drive, there are approximately 15 houses, approximately 15 children, and nearly as many elderly residents. Inconsistent sidewalks in that area also lead to pedestrians having to use the street. Heavy equipment loading and unloading supplies presents further risk. Based on Ken Gruber's statement at the planning commission, he indicated that 25,000-pound vehicles will not enter off the Deerfield entrance, which would force them to the Joanne area, thus causing risks there. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Other comments from the public?
My name is Jennifer Bogdanoff, B-O-G-D-A-N-O-F-F, and I reside also at 2011 Soran Drive. As a concerned resident of Deerfield, I wish to formally express my opposition to the conditional use permit proposed for 1925 Soran Drive. Deerfield is a quiet, family-oriented community where residents are dedicated to maintaining a safe and peaceful environment. The introduction of a commercial enterprise into our neighborhood would fundamentally change the character of our area and set a precedent that would undermine the integrity of our existing zoning protections. After reviewing the last five years of conditional use applications, I found that approximately 56 applications have been presented to the City Council for approval. Of these, only 15 were located in residential areas, the medium-density and the rural residential zones. Many of these residential requests related to garages, retaining walls, or other types of improvements like that. Some applications involve small businesses operating within homes under strict conditions, such as a massage therapy business allowing only one customer at a time, a bed and breakfast limited to two guest rooms, and in-home daycares with a maximum of eight children. These examples represent reasonable accommodations for a residential neighborhood. In contrast, an international organization that advertises thousands of volunteers and hosts various trainings does not align with the expectations of a residential community. I urge you to consider whether you would want such activity in your own neighborhood. The future is unpredictable. If the organization is unable to remain at this location or decides to move, the CUP could transfer to the new owner, maintaining the precedent for commercial activity in a residential area. The approval would also open the door for additional organizations to seek entry into other residential neighborhoods. I respectfully urge you to uphold the current zoning designation and deny the conditional use permit for this business. Our community deserves to remain a place where families can thrive free from the intrusion of incompatible development. Thank you for your attention to this matter and for your commitment to preserving the character of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? We'll go on this slide.
My name is Megan Hennigs, H-E-N-N-I-G-S. I live at 1993 Pressridge Drive in Deerfield and have for nine years. I'm here to speak tonight in opposition to the conditional use permit request. According to the application, the request is for office use and limited nonprofit activity, things like administrative work, volunteer coordination, and small training sessions. It was described as modest in scale with minimal traffic and no commercial operations. However, what's happening in practice and what was stated publicly by the applicant at the planning commission meeting and on social media tells a very different story. There's storage of heavy equipment, including a shower trailer, tool trailers, 60-foot lift, track loader, mini-skid, and hundreds of totes and tools. Photos confirm driving an excavator and loading it onto a semi on Joanne Drive, busloads of Ron Colley students, and a week-long chainsaw training. There have been youth group stays, baptisms, pool use, and open houses, several occurring after the denial to recommend the CUP from the planning commission. The property also hosted groups from multiple states and averaged 14 days of nonprofit visitors per month and 93 days of open calls to meet at 1925 Soran Drive, quoted as "all day, come when you can" since the beginning of this year. They have two and a half paid staff, a core group of 50 workers, and 14,000 volunteers who do not have criminal background checks, motor vehicle checks, sex offender registry checks, or drug screenings. These activities are far beyond what was described in the application. Deerfield is a special place. It's a neighborhood where children still play outside daily, ride their bikes, and play kickball. We're invested in this community because it's safe and family-oriented. My husband and I are proud to be a part of that. For the past four years, we've coached soccer and basketball for our children through the Blair FC and Blair Basketball Club, and I am also a member of the Blair Basketball Club Board. Along with us both working full-time, we want to give back to our beautiful community in this way, by coaching, mentoring, and building relationships, not by policing illegal activity of a business operating out of our neighborhood or spending evenings away from our children at city council meetings fighting for the protections that should already be in place. We ask you to uphold the integrity of the zoning process and deny this permit. It poses monumental concerns for traffic, safety, and neighborhood preservation. Thank you for your time and for hopefully protecting our children and the character of our community.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
I am Dan Veskrna, V-E-S-K-R-N-A, and I live at 1551 Joanne Drive. Mayor and council members, we have owned the 14 acres that we live on for the past 22 years. I actually bought that property from Mr. Bob Woodhouse. Our property starts at the end of Joanne Drive where the concrete ends, and that is where our private lane begins. Now, there is what some people call a cul-de-sac there. It's not really a cul-de-sac, to my understanding, it's an emergency vehicle turnaround. And I probably need to check with somebody in the city with that, or I believe that's what it's for. We have concerns about the increase in traffic on our lane and the heavy equipment and heavy vehicles that Rapid Response has driven on our lane. Our lane was never meant for that. And yes, there is an easement for this property. We knew that when we bought the property. Bob had an easement in place. However, I don't think the easement was intended for this type of use. It was intended more for residential use for the residentially zoned property. On October 20th of this year, one of our neighbors advised us that there was a semi parked on our lane and was unloading a large excavator. This was a triple-axle semi, a triple-axle trailer, very heavy. It was loading that had the excavator on it. They simply parked it there. Yeah, maybe not for that long, they moved it off. But that's a lot of weight. I can't tell you the number of pounds for that truck, trailer, and excavator, but it's a lot of weight. I was never asked or informed of the heavy use for any of this. In addition to the increased traffic on our lane and Joanne Drive, the residents of Deerfield are also seeing increase in traffic in their neighborhoods. Some of that's because, well, if they can't go one way, they go the other. And I get the part about the easement, but I think there-
Thank you.
Mary Jo Veskrna, 1551 Joanne Drive. Dan is my husband. I would just like to talk about the lane in the winter, the one that goes across back over to the other property from our property. They have said that that bridge can't allow for emergency vehicles to go over to their property in case of a fire or an emergency. If any of you have ever tried to go down on that back road in the winter, there's hardly any way you can get through there. Even in the spring, when it's so muddy, I can't see fire department or rescue to be able to get back there either. So I hate for them to go to the fact that they need to use our road, which sometimes we can't even get out of in the winter, as an emergency entrance to their home, because it wouldn't be accessible. It's not accessible to us sometimes. So that's something to really consider as far as with their CUP. The lane, our driveway, wouldn't be appropriate for the types of equipment and people that they're considering to enter into their property. I would just encourage you to deny the CUP so that we can all continue back and have our residential community as we hoped when we purchased this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Justin Philp, 11637 County Road 32.
Spell your last name.
P-H-I-L-P.
Thank you.
So on April 26th of last year, when the tornado came through, I was driving home to watch a tornado hit our house. My wife was at home, working from home that day, and raced home, did not know what I was going to find. I found her coming up the steps, she was okay, our house was destroyed. It wasn't too long after that that we met Omaha Rapid Response when they showed up with chainsaws, helping hands, trash bags, all this stuff you didn't know you needed because you didn't know you were getting ready to move. It came in, just helped us tremendously, helped our neighbors, made everyone just comfortable knowing that someone was there to help. Because of that, I volunteered since that time with Omaha Rapid Response, and my wife left her job to work there full-time. I know that the thought of having a business in a neighborhood immediately sparks fears of traffic congestion, what people are going to be doing, driving in and out. And I know from my personal experience of me being there, there is little to zero truck traffic, no more than the neighborhood has had. Anytime you drive through that neighborhood, there are trucks, trailers, lawn care, this, that, you know, all the construction that's been going on. And that is no different than the trucks that we brought in was to fix hail damage, to fix the back road. And when you have, you know, 120, 150-year-old trees, you do need an excavator to get those out of there. Having that big of a property, that was the only option to get trees that large out of there. I know that it's kind of a unique situation for people to get to decide who their neighbors are, but without having kids, without having, you know, all these extra people coming that would typically be doing lawn care, maintenance, pool, house cleaning possibly, all that's done by the people on-site. There's no extra traffic for that except for possibly me and my wife. I know that our schedules, we drive from our house more than five, six times a day. You've got kid soccer practice, you've got dance, you've got all these things. Their driveway gets less traffic than ours does. I think that both neighbors on either side can attest to that, that there is no more traffic coming or going. I think if you wanted anyone in your neighborhood, it would be them. They're the most thoughtful, helping people you could imagine. They've got, they've spent their whole, you know, career basically helping people at their worst times and being great neighbors. So I think that you can't fault them for that. Also, when it comes to like that being a training base, a headquarters, everybody knows that property and Deerfield in general is not on your way to anywhere. If you have a crisis somewhere, that's where the meetup is. They're very respectful of all the volunteers' time and know that if they're going to have to drive an extra half hour to get to that property and then go back to meet at the place, it's easier to always have your base where you're helping and assisting at. So I would like to see an approval of the CUP.
Other comments from the public?
I just want to remind the council and the mayor, thank you for having us and for hearing this, and you're doing a very good job on both sides, I think. It's hard to run a, your jobs are tough. And I'm not here to tell you that, you already know that. What I want to share with you though is, you know, there is some precedent here. The city approved that driveway before any of these folks showed up. The houses weren't built, it was planned, but the houses weren't even built when that driveway went in coming through Soran. And the one in the back, obviously you heard it was an easement that came off of a farm property. And, you know, I just went through a process in Fort Worth where the HOA wanted to deny an easement, and now I understand easements pretty well. And it's pretty clear, an easement is for life. Once it's on paper, not, you know, I can't find you the paper to show you, but any case, if that driveway was approved by the city council or whoever approved it back then, and these people came in and then they built schools and libraries and such afterward, I don't know how you can pull it out, take away. I mean, it's kind of like turning on your own kind a little bit there. That's just, I'm looking at common sense, that you have all these COs or CUs or whatever they are to be responsible to as well. So thank you for your, you know, respect, whatever decision you made.
Well, actually, just a moment. Thank you.
Reverend Jim Erwin, E-R-W-I-N, First Baptist Church. I live at 12392 Rose Drive out at Country Estates. And I don't know anything about property, I can't testify about that, but I can testify about Rapid Response. I worked with them at the tornado out at Lakeland, and I also worked with them at the trailer park. We had 140 mile an hour wind, tear up multiple trailers, rip the roofs off of them. Fire department's there, I'm also a chaplain with the fire department. I love Blair, Nebraska. I've been all over in the military, all over the world, missionary 15 years. I've never lived anywhere that I like more than Blair, Nebraska. I love this community. And I tell you what, working for the fire department, some of the greatest men and women I've ever met in my life. They don't play around, and they have, I thought we'd be sitting around, they'd be drinking beer and playing cards. They don't do any of that. They're working every Thursday and other days. They're dedicated. And yet, there were people griping about the sirens being too loud. You believe that? They work full-time, they volunteer their time to save lives. And I tell you who else does that? Rapid Response. They do all that, they come, they came out to our park right after the fire department and had left getting people out, here they were, taking out trees off of people's houses, making sure everybody was okay. They're still coming back. We have a lot of trees that are still split that we can't remove. They want $5,000 to remove one tree. Rapid Response will do it for free. Now, I don't know anything about your zoning stuff, but I tell you what, we need those people in our community. What if it's Deerfield next year? What if it's Deerfield next year, tornado comes through, wouldn't it be nice to have them next door? That's just what I think. I think somehow, some way, we need to work all this out to keep them here, because it's an honor to have them here. It's an honor to be in Blair. If I can ever help any of you, let me know.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Good evening, Mayor Rump and the city council. My name is Jackie Grace, G-R-A-C-E, and I reside with my husband Don at 1231 Pine Wood Drive. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my opposition to the conditional use permit application by Mr. Ken Group and the Omaha Rapid Response. I want to publicly thank Planning Commission for their seven to one no vote on October 7th and for amending the CUP to two years rather than 10 requested. Tonight, I ask the members of the Blair City Council to follow the lead of the Blair Planning Commission and vote no to the CUP application at hand. We have lived at 1231 Pine Wood Drive for 30 years. My husband and I developed Pine Wood Estates. I was actually the neighbor who Mr. Woodhouse contacted to try to get access to his property through our development. Thankfully, we didn't allow that. We are concerned and motivated to preserve the zoning in our quiet, secure neighborhood. We have been neighbors to both previous owners of the property at 1925 Soren Drive. Both were good business owners, operating from large storm fronts on Main Street or the main thoroughfares in Blair, abiding by the RL zoning regs of single-family dwelling. If, as Bob Woodhouse has stated, he ran business from that property, I would say shame on you. I would guess that he was, in fact, not in regulation having a CUP. That does not make what this one is right, that it would be approved. Most of what I was going to address was zoning regulations, and they have already been addressed tonight. The only one that has not is just the precedence that would be set by arbitrary spot zoning, changing, allowing the CUP in a residential district. There are several smaller CUPs that have been denied locally, and allowing a larger one to be approved would set precedence for further possibility of those things in some of our other developments in the city. So I respectfully submit to you these points where RRA does not fall in compliance with current zoning and ask that the Blair City Council deny the approval of the conditional use permit and not allow exceptions to be made to accommodate this business at the 1927 Soren Drive location. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Right here in front.
My name is Emily Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-E-N. I live at 1286 Joanne Drive. To give a bit of background about me, I have a master's in public administration with an emphasis in nonprofit management. I have 10 years of experience in the nonprofit sector, specifically with regulatory and financial auditing. I share this information to help you understand the lens through which I'm looking at the application tonight. While ideally, ownership would be immaterial to the discussion tonight, as this is a land use issue that should be compared against Blair's comprehensive plan and zoning regulations, in this particular circumstance, ownership can't be disregarded based on the 501(c)(3) status of the owner and the subsequent negative financial impact to the taxpayer. After an eight-year search, the owner ultimately decided to forego purchasing a property zoned for commercial or industrial use and instead selected the most expensive residential property in the city. The residential property was purchased for $1.55 million, yet due to the owner's tax-exempt status, the approximately $15,000 in property taxes will not be paid to the city for the benefit of the community. In fact, the delinquent 2024 property taxes were not paid until attention was brought to the past due balance during the Planning Commission meeting. The four neighborhoods, including Barronage, because they are within 300 feet of the access route, which would be the Joanne Drive one, they have prices ranging from $250,000 to over a million dollars in their value. Study after study after study shows that surrounding residential homes depreciate 5% to 15% near institutional uses. Property owners are looking conservatively at about a million dollar loss in the value of their homes. If the conditional use permit is approved for institutional use, the fire hazard level for the property changes, triggering a fire flow review. Considering the distance to the closest fire hydrant, which is on Joanne Drive, a new hydrant or line extension is likely required. Add this to the cost of a traffic impact assessment, site plan review, site compatibility evaluation, parking and loading study, utilities assessment, environmental screening review, and the owner has about a minimum of $35,000 to demonstrate, as he's legally bound to do, that the nature of the activities at the site will not cause harm, undo harm to the neighborhoods. For this reason, I'm gonna mention the chronic financial instability of the owner of the property. Overall budget deficits are detailed in the IRS Form 990s, 2011, 2012, 2015. They didn't file 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, their status was revoked. It was reinstated in 2020, again with a deficit, and then in 2022, 2023, they bought a $1.5 million property in 2024 on a $260,000 annual budget, and then had delinquent property taxes in 2025. The financial instability of the organization must be considered when assessing its ability to mitigate the financial burden on the community. Under Blair sitting zoning, 1720, cups must not unduly burden the welfare of the residents, which has been upheld in Nebraska Supreme Court decisions like Smith v. City of Papillion. They claim to serve Nebraskans, but Form 990s, their website and media, show a significant portion of their work is out of state and country. Sri Lanka, Indonesia, Haiti, the Philippines, Nepal, Guatemala, Puerto Rico, Ukraine, Hawaii, Texas, California, Iowa, Missouri, Kentucky, North Carolina, Florida, Louisiana, and Oklahoma, with several of those in the past year alone. Blair receives a fraction of the benefit, but the entirety of the loss of property tax revenue, loss of property value, damage to roads, enforcement costs, and likely, increasingly likely, litigation costs falling squarely to the Blair taxpayers. Last two sentences. Fifty-four of the 56 affected residents, which I want to focus on, the ones who are actually along that route, 54 of the 56 have spoken out on this issue in opposition to the conditional use permit. I urge you to deny the application for the welfare of our community. Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Steve Callahan, 1126 Cory Drive. I really would just have a question. I'm an elected official like you guys are, and had him go through a very rough budget season this year, some of the worst decisions we had to make this year. When I hear that we are losing $1.5 million worth of property tax, that makes me very concerned, because who that affects the greatest is your schools. And so that's my concern, not so much anything else. How do we make that up? You know, how do we find places in that to make that up? And I know we have other businesses that help us tremendously, that also get some tax breaks, and that's great, but they give back to the community and back to the schools in particular, because that's what I'm, of course, most concerned about. So I guess I just would want to know, is there a way to help recoup some of that lost income for the school system? Because increasingly, you know, our middle area is the lowest in this whole eastern part of the state, except for Springfield, Platteville. And we're lower than Fort Calhoun, lower than Arlington, much lower than Omaha, at 77 cents instead of 105 like most of them. It's getting tougher and tougher, and that and our buildings are not getting any younger. So I guess I'm just facing the same thing you do when you have to do budgets. You know, where are we gonna recoup that as a school? Or can we recoup it? Because I know a million and .5 is a pretty good hunk, I think it would be. I'm no finance manager, a social studies teacher as opposed to finance. But anyway, that's all I had to say, you know, as a question, more or less. Is there a way that we can, you know, because it sounds like they do some wonderful things, you know? I'm not saying anything bad about them, because it sounds like they helped us out a lot in the community, but thank goodness, we won't have one of those every year, hopefully. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Betsy Anderson, 1235 Pine Wood Drive, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. Last night, I had the opportunity to read the many letters of support the city received regarding Omaha Rapid Response, their mission. And as far as I know, there's no one in the room that disagrees with this mission of helping others, no one. So I think we can put that issue aside. There are, however, concerns about the location of the business, which is nestled between three residential neighborhoods. I want to take just a minute to introduce you or to tell you about some of the people from these three neighborhoods that are sitting behind me tonight. They're not only homeowners, but they're also volunteers. They help out at the Food Pantry, Memorial Community Hospital Auxiliary, the Janet Hunt Animal Shelter, the many, many youth sports programs, Little League Soccer, Baseball, Football, the Recycle Center, numerous school activities, including parent-teacher organizations, classroom aides, and teammates. And I have many others that I'm not gonna take time to mention. They also attend and volunteer at our churches. All of us can remember First Lutheran Church's response to the tornado and the derecho. Immediately, their doors opened, supplies were donated by many of these same people. Meals were prepared and served. FEMA and the Red Cross were invited to set up their local headquarters there, and it was a volunteer operational and informational center for months. The church provided power for portable oxygen concentrators, they served as a charging station for phones, and they provided an air-conditioned haven for those in need. First Lutheran Church repeatedly provided meals for the Omaha Response Team. The church is still providing free meals weekly to anyone who wants one. These neighbors are volunteers that support our community, not only during times of earth-shaking disasters, but every day. These homeowners are also taxpayers. For the fiscal year 2024, the homeowners of Deerfield, Joanne Drive, and Pine Wood paid over $200,000 in property tax to the City of Blair. These taxes are paid year in and year out. Multiply that amount times five years, that's a million dollars, and times 10 years, that's $2 million. That's a sizable amount of money for these three neighborhoods. This is tax revenue for the city. These tax dollars maintain our streets, they pay for the electricity to light those streets, they maintain our sewer and water plant, financially support the police department, the fire department, the rescue squad, they support animal control, our library, maintain our city parks. These taxpayers, or these tax dollars, keep our city running. These homeowners are the lifeblood of our community. Most of the people here tonight are asking you not to grant this CUP. They contribute both their time and their tax dollars to our city, and their voices should be heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
My name is Matthew Konick, K-O-N-E-Z-K.
Mr. Konick, your address?
3314 South 88th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I typed this up, because then I could speak an hour up here, so. I'm here today to express my profound admiration for the Response Team, a nonprofit organization that consistently provides hope and assistance in times of great need, both locally, nationally, and overseas. Having experienced their incredible work as both a recipient and a provider of aid, I can personally attest to their impactful efforts. While their current operational model involves some meetings and developing or deploying to areas of devastation, I believe there is opportunity to further enhance their invaluable contributions. It would truly, it would truly, it would be truly remarkable if the Response could establish a more consistent, hands-on training and for its dedicated volunteers. Such a program undoubtedly strengthen their capacity to respond effectively to future crises. Given the exceptional nature of their mission and their unwavering commitment to serving communities, not just locally, not just nationally, but worldwide, I strongly believe that the City of Blair should be honored to provide a location, a permanent home for this organization. This would not only provide them with a stable base for their operations, which, like they've said, is very minimal of traffic. And, yeah, thank you for considering their proposal and your time recognizing their extraordinary work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Deanne Rowndy, it's R-O-U-N-D-Y. My office address is 2625 South 140th Street, and that's in Omaha, Nebraska. I do not live in Blair, and I can see you guys have a very passionate community here, which is great. I did have the joy, though, of working with Rapid Response to find this property. And I'm not an emotional person, which is why I didn't want to get up here today, because I felt like I would be. I didn't help them for the eight years that they looked for a property. I did help them for the last year, and we looked at a lot of properties. And they did put an offer in on other properties. For some reason, it was Blair that they were supposed to be. And I don't know why, I am personally a religious person, I know they are as well, and they share that faith with me. There were miracles that were had through the process that I can't explain. The properties that didn't work, they didn't work for a reason. There's a reason why I believe they're supposed to be here in Blair. I don't know why that is. Ashland made a lot more sense. Yes, it was a commercial property, it was actually my listing, that would have been a really nice deal for me. And it was set up perfectly for them, but it didn't work out. When we found this property in Blair, I actually, it was great, it was a great price point, actually, for some of the stuff that we were looking at. And I didn't really think it was gonna make a lot of sense, but things fell into place. I think there's a lot of information here tonight, there's a lot of stats, there's a lot for you guys to consider, especially with citizens that are behind you here in Blair. I just want to testify that there's a reason they're supposed to be here. They are an amazing organization. I actually brought my son here tonight, he's 20 years old, he was actually here helping them cut down trees the other week, as my husband was as well. He's learned some skills just by volunteering with them that he wouldn't have gotten otherwise. And I believe there's a lot of good to be had if there is a, I don't know, compromise is the right word, but I think they can bring a lot to this community if you guys can all work together. So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Wayne Roat. Anyway, I wasn't home at the time that the tornado of last year hit.
Excuse me, sir, would you spell your last name?
But my daughter was.
You spell your last name and state your address.
G-R-O-A-T.
Thank you. And your address?
It's 12405 County Road 34, Blair.
Thank you.
Anyway, I got home and it was a disaster. I mean, I have hundreds of trees, and she says you don't even want to come home. And we had people coming out of the woodwork. And we had Rapid Response come, and without their help, it'd still be a disaster. Because just one person cannot do it. And, you know, they're just God-fearing, you know, just helping people, like, you know, he wouldn't wait. Whatever they do is great in my book. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
My name is Derek Thompson, T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. Live at 1943 Front Street. I believe what Rapid Response is asking for is a reasonable accommodation. They are not asking for a zoning, just a CUP. The city has a history of granting CUP and changing zoning. On the block I live on, which is Front Street between 19th and 20th, the property two lots down from me was rezoned from residential to commercial, and there's now a business operating out of that. Across the street is the, I can't remember the name of the park that the city named it. It's the Surge Pond by the railroad tracks.
Floric.
Thank you. That was residential. I believe it was residential, commercial, and now the city operates it. It's also a skating rink, so there is mildly increased traffic a few weeks out of the year, you know. And then on that side of the block, at the end of the block, is a storage unit, storage facility, that I believe receives a CUP or an exemption to operate that in a commercial area. I know I've gotten two notices since I've lived there, since 2012, about them getting renewed or the process of getting renewed. So it's not uncommon for something like this to be in a residential neighborhood. What else I got in here? I could, you could say the same thing for the Deerfield area. Since it was initially founded, it has expanded quite a lot and lots of areas with the same kind of exemption. The library, the school, splash pad, pickleball courts. There's that church, apartment complexes. I mean, if something was going to be, bother this community so much with traffic, you would think they would have been against a pickleball court or a splash pad, which would be increased traffic, I'm sure, substantially in hot days. As I've been sitting here, I've been jotting down some notes about other things people have brought up. Can everyone hear me okay? Am I speaking into this? They have not and will not store or house people on the property. It's, that's not in their zoning, they can't legally do it. The equipment is all stored inside, so it's not like a nuisance. Like, it's not like he's got a trailer up on blocks in his front yard. People have also made comments about the road not being, the back gravel road not being serviceable. I was there the week we were cleaning up trees. They had a large excavator come down it to help move the trees. If that excavator didn't sink or didn't tear up the road, it's reasonable to assume it's in good shape. I also was operating a skid loader on that road. At no point did I feel unsafe on it in a piece of equipment that has less visibility than a vehicle. I mean, some people have got up here and said that, "Traffic, traffic, it's increased traffic. There's going to be increased traffic." Without an actual traffic study being performed, how do we know exactly how much traffic has increased or will increase? You could also say that there are undeveloped lots in that neighborhood that, once they are developed and a house is put on, wouldn't that increase traffic? So, I mean, the idea that traffic is somehow going to be a nightmare, wouldn't it already be before they were there and continue to be? They also mentioned the heavy equipment on the back gravel road. That was a one-time use. They do not own that excavator. They have no reason to own that excavator. They have, the biggest piece of equipment would be about a size skid loader, which they would move in and out of the property on a trailer. They wouldn't be driving a skid loader down a city street or in a neighborhood doing stuff with it.
Mr. Thompson, you have your three minutes, so if you could just finish your last thought.
Oh, and I would like to know, has there been any noise complaints before the Planning Commission, when did everyone learn about what was going, what they wanted to do there? If they've been operating there for 14 months, wouldn't there have been noise complaints before that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, my name is Jessica McIntosh, M-C-I-N-T-O-S-H, and I reside at 1164 Joanne Drive. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that this is probably a difficult decision to make as a council member, but I'm confident that you'll look at the laws, the zoning, and the facts, and make the same decision that you would make if this were a commercial training facility or corporate headquarters trying to sandwich between some of the neighborhoods that make Blair such a special place to live. With that in mind, I respectfully ask that the council denies the request for a conditional use permit as it does not align with Blair's comprehensive plan. For those in the audience who may be unfamiliar, the Blair Comprehensive Plan is a legal document that was established by a group of citizens, architects, planners, city council members, and the Chamber of Commerce. This document addresses the city's land use and represents the city's desires for the future, such as improving neighborhoods and providing housing opportunities, creating continual dialogue of housing challenges and opportunities in the community, protecting and preserving existing residential areas, minimizing land use conflicts between neighboring parcels and neighborhoods, and creating consistent characteristics within each use district. Additionally, the Comprehensive Plan has a checklist for items for evaluating for developments. The plan considers zoning and uses of nearby properties. In this case, Deerfield has apartments, the library, a school, pickleball courts, and a splash pad. But none of those require traffic to go through the neighborhood to be accessed. Carter Place on Joanne Drive also does not require access via neighborhood streets. Additionally, they log two to four EMS calls per week. Added traffic could delay responses, not only for those residents, but for the residents of Joanne Drive. 1925 Soran Drive is less than half a mile from the school. I'm concerned that this proximity will endanger schoolchildren in addition to the children that live in the neighboring residential areas. The property's MLS listing indicated that this is a hidden private retreat. There is no portion of that property near a public road for signage to assist their international and out-of-town trainees to locate this hidden private retreat. The plan also considers the type and extent of positive or negative impact that may affect adjacent properties or the city at large if the request is approved. Granting this CUP will negatively impact adjacent properties with noise, traffic, and safety concerns, as well as decreased property values and general incompatibility with quiet residential zones. Additionally, it will have a negative impact on the city as there will be a loss of property taxes, dissatisfaction of residents, a loss of trust in the city's ability to enforce regulations and arbitrary spot zoning. The plan lists the length of time that the subject and adjacent properties have been utilized for their current uses. In this case, over 25 years as purely residential. The Comprehensive Plan prioritizes preserving rural edges. Granting this conditional use permit would urbanize a fringe area. In conclusion, 1925 Soran Drive is simply not the right location for this organization's global headquarters. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Felix Ungerman, U-N-G-E-R-M-A-N, and I work out of 1925 Soran Drive. One of those staff members that was mentioned of the five. And so I have driven through there periodically throughout the time that I've been working with them part-time. And each time since the issue has been brought up, I've also been just trying to get a sense of what is the traffic situation? What does it look like? And before I say that, I will say I served 25 years in the military, commanded troops in combat in Afghanistan, up in the mountains, where the bad guys are, and I learned politics the hard way, that if you didn't do it right, they'd kill you for it. So I also worked as Congressman Bacon's District Director for seven and a half years, where we won the Best Constituent Services Award in all of Congress. So, very proud of the culture that I brought to that, that I also try very hard to bring and instill and work with Ken Gruber at Omaha Rapid Response or Rapid Response America. So I just wanted to highlight that I have seen quite a few vehicles that concern me going through the neighborhood, from Amazon trucks, UPS, FedEx, some of the Dine DoorDash, many, many contractors. There is a lot of construction going on, as there are new houses being built, but also things from HVAC, landscaping, roofing, and many others. And they do park on the streets, so I can understand the concerns about weaving in and out of the traffic. But never have I seen Omaha Rapid Response have to be parked in the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. I do want to at least say that I do share or appreciate the concerns that have been raised by folks and certainly have appreciated that many of you have been contacted, if not all of you, and had the opportunity to come up, see and engage, as well as neighborhoods in the surrounding area, beyond just what is required for the notification of the meetings. There's been a lot of engagement to ask neighbors, social media, please come up, come see the property, come talk to us. While there were big dreams that were shared about the idea of what Rapid Response could become, it's also known that, number one, it's not going to happen. Number two, if it were to happen, in theory, it would have to come to this board and to the Planning Commission to get approval for any kind of expansion or construction. And with the Blair Comprehensive Plan that states that you have to build things to minimize the impact, nothing new has been built on that property and would need your approval in order to do so. So as far as I am aware, I'm not an expert on the plan, nothing has changed about the configuration of buildings to increase anything in that capacity. I wanted to at least highlight that in any of our decisions that we would make in a congressional office, we would try to take in all the facts that we could and try to be consistent and fair in any way that we decided to move forward or try to address the concerns that were brought to us. People would tell us we did that in spades, as evidenced by the awards that we won. So I would simply say that, having noticed, even when I drive up here regularly, I notice that the YMCA parking lot is in a residential-zoned area. As I looked that up to see where it was, the house right next to it has gone up by more than $100,000 over the last 10 years, with no decline, you can look it up. So the value of a house that has the backyard looking directly at the YMCA full parking lot every single day has not declined in value. But the YMCA is a classic example of a great nonprofit organization that's doing tremendous work in the community, benefiting the people there, contributing to the economy there, which, as you were told at the beginning of the presentation, $200,000-plus in revenue spent in the community that wouldn't be there otherwise from Rapid Response, that I do understand the implication of the tax revenues, but there is some offset to that that needs to be factored into the decision that you make. So all I'm really asking is to take a look at other decisions that have been made by the City Council, by the Planning Commission. Consider if the same types of organizations that are in residential areas, whether it's churches, even public buildings like the libraries and other things that are in those neighborhoods and around the communities. The baseball parks, by the way, are fantastic. I've driven by them, they're fantastic. They have lots of kids playing there. But they also are in residential areas and create greater traffic flows inconveniences for the neighbors who happen to live in those areas as well. So none of these things come without some sort of impact. And I think if the impact is reasonable, then I would ask you to be consistent in the decisions that have been made otherwise. And granted, there haven't been formal studies, but there also have never been any formal complaints leading up to the Planning Commission meeting. So I would say that if it was a significant issue and there was attempts made to be open to the community about any concerns about them being there, that if there were no formal complaints, no one was calling the police, whether emergency or non-emergency number, and no one was filing anything formally with the city, that those complaints for the last 14 months that might have been there didn't rise to a level that would justify declining. And I highly and vehemently urge you to approve the conditional use. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Jackie Mahr, M-A-H-R, 11040 North Lake Shore Drive, Blair, Nebraska. I do live at Lakeland, which is a gated community, a private community. And what I hear here, I'm confused. This is a public street we're talking about, right? And so you will have, you know, trucks and garbage trucks as heavy as anything else down those streets and other things, like you said, the, you know, the deliveries, Amazon, all those things, that it's a public street, you can't stop that. Whereas Lakeland, you have gates and cars and go up to the gate and whatever. So I was just wondering, oh, and also, I am a chaplain with the IFOC, which is the International Fellowship of Chaplains, which I took under the direction of the Omaha Rapid Response. It was off-site, but there's training on Zoom as well. So many of these things that we're talking about, you're thinking in public and in person, things, many of this is, they're off-site. They fly to everywhere to help. They're not, you know, bringing in internationals or all of that. So I would just, you know, have you think about that this is the age of a technology. They use lots of kinds of technology to not have to be anywhere in person. But also, again, is it a public street or is it a private street? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public that are bringing new information? No. Sorry, Mr. Byer.
I'm Ron Bulian, B-U-L-B-U-L-I-A-N, at 1234 Joanne Drive. Most of the people that have spoken on behalf of the CUP have been people who have no, nothing in, no place in the claim. They don't live in Blair, most of them, and they don't even live in the neighborhoods that are impacted by this proposed CUP. Mr. Woodhouse mentioned that his his access was granted way back when he bought the property, but at that time, Joanne Drive had not been developed. There were only one or two houses on it. Right now, we have more and more homes. We have children in the neighborhood and elderly individuals, as you've already heard. And so that has to be taken into consideration. Furthermore, he now lives in Dallas, as he said. How can he weigh in on the concerns of the Deerfield people and the Joanne Drive people and any others that are presenting, making presentations today? You already heard that the Planning Board has turned down this CUP. None of the people that spoke on behalf of the CUP presented any data about compliance with zoning regulations, with any of the conditional use necessities in order to qualify for this CUP. Just saying that we're good people and we do good work. I commend them for that. I myself went to North Carolina during hurricane disaster relief. I worked with the several other organizations that were there. But that doesn't give me the right to flaunt regulations, laws, zoning requirements at all. The property owner on Joanne Drive mentioned that this allowance to go through the property was granted by the city. However, those easements are usually for utilities, telephone companies, running lines, city uses. But it's not for private use, nor are they for... city uses, but it's not for private use, nor are they for organizations, as we're discussing today, to use as a roadway. An easement is not a roadway. You've heard data on issues related to noise, accidents, property values, all those are published data. The presentation on the opposite side has not cited any data at all, other than to say we do good work. And it was claimed that the city can provide a place, should provide a place for this organization to set up their headquarters. And there are many other zoning areas where they could set up without even requiring a zoning change.
Mr. Bubulian, your three minutes. Can you finish your final thought?
Yes. Finally, the last person here talked about the YMCA, the pickleballs, the baseball fields and whatnot. All those have major highways going right in front of those properties, and you're not required to go through neighborhoods to get to the YMCA. You don't drive through a neighborhood to get to the pickleball courts. All those are on Highway 30, is it? What's that? Seventy-five. So anyway, I ask the board to not approve the CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byerman, did you have something you wanted to say?
At the end, if you don't mind.
At the end? Okay. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Daniel Pratt, P R A T T, 870 North 16th Street. I live in the, I live near, in the Arbor Park area. And I've heard a lot of concern about losing tax dollars and, you know, every charitable organization, I agree with Felix on the why is the churches or charitable organizations? They don't take away from the community, I think, by being charitable organizations, by taking money off, because they add so much more to that. I've been a resident of Blair for over three years now. And before that, I lived in King Lake, Nebraska, when the flood hit in 2019, my property was underwater. They came and helped me rebuild, and I started being involved with them and deploying with them. At that, I thought I could take. But then I moved to Blair, I took a contract, and I'm here. I can't deploy with them. When they moved here, it was a blessing that I could go and give back, you know, to something that gave me so much. And what I receive and what volunteers receive is so much, you know, it's an opportunity to enrich our lives so much more. I also am a chaplain with IFOC. I was trained through, by being introduced to it, to Rapid Response. And as far as the people that go to the campus, to the buildings, that there's none finer. They've all got background checks. They've been vetted. There's no strangers that come up without invitation. But it is a safe organization, and safety is first with us. So that's, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
I am for it.
Other comments from the public? Having none? Sorry. Go ahead. Thank you.
I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that were said. We don't have customers. We are very, we have wide-reaching effects around the world, but we're a very small organization. We, the young lady spouted off some facts about different things. We've never been in a deficit. We've always paid our bills. Yes, we did not know that we owned taxes when Lippincott's owned it, and we went the very next day and paid off the taxes. We've never been to Indonesia or California. There's a lot of misinformation that's going around here. There's a lot of information about this. There's no facts or statistics on traffic flow or noise or anything else. It's just hearsay and a lot of stuff. We can prove of our traffic because of cameras that we have that come down our road or go up to our house, or the people that cut through there. That's made available to you at any time you want. We have been told by a few neighbors that we appreciate you driving so slow through the neighborhood. There is no greater priority in our lives, in our organization, than kids' lives. We all have kids. We have grandkids. We will never put anybody at risk doing that. And with the people that come up, like the gentleman just said, we don't just have, havesely have people coming in. The only people that are coming in are invited, just like we did for open houses. We're not trying to hide anything. We want to be a good neighbor and a good member of this community. We've worked with First Lutheran Church. Erica and some of the people there have been fantastic. We want to work with all the churches. We're part of the Washington County Ministerial Association now. And so we want to be a part that we can show what we're doing. We've shown it for 14 months. There hasn't been any complaints. There hasn't been any reports. We take being serious and part of the neighborhood seriously. We maintain the two roads, the front road and the back road. And it's, there's a permanent easement there by state statute, because it's been over 10 years. And even the neighbors behind us, we got along fine with them. I told them we were going to cut down the trees, and all of a sudden, they started putting ropes around the back there so that our garbage man has to take the rope down now or whatever. And actually, the rope is illegal because it's a permanent easement. And so, but we still want to work with our neighbors. We still want to, no matter the things that are being said here, you know, this sounds like this is, we know that there's great volunteers in this community, and we're really thankful for that. We want them to come and volunteer with us, you know? We want them to be a part of us, too. The training that we want to put out there is for mainly this community first. We want to take care of our people. We want the people that want to go out and help others, if we can do some training and help them be more advanced in what they're trying to do out there in the field, we want to be a part of that. So we're just asking, where are the facts? A lot of things have been thrown out there. There's no statistics or facts or proof that we've upped the traffic by, other than the neighbors, they're the closest there, that said there's little to no change or even less change. And so I just ask that you would look through some of the things that are the fear-based facts that they're saying, the fear-based comments that they're making, just don't hold water because they don't have anything to back them up. We are, other things were brought out, you know, we don't, you know, it's purely residential. We keep hearing people saying we want to rezone or whatever. We don't want to rezone. We're in a low-density residential. We thought that we could be able to operate this out of there because of what's happened before. We were not told even after talking with some of the city officials in the spring that we had do a continue use permit. It was only after the article in the Washington Paper in August, when Phil Green got ahold of me and said, okay, now we got to go through the process. Otherwise, we would have done it from day one or even before we got this property. If we thought there was something that was going to hinder us from being this property, we would have done it. I mean, it's just common sense. And it's like, okay, we're going to be here. We have to go through some hoops or whatever, we would have done that. But we weren't aware of that at the time. So you, most of you have been up to the property. You know that we are so removed from all these other neighborhoods, and the traffic is very low from us, that there's buffer zones, there's so many trees, there's thousands of trees, that the impact is really minimal. And like I want to say, I want to throw that out, that there was no complaints of noise, there was no complaints of anything before the planning commission meeting. So there's just been a lot of stirring up of unsubstantiated facts, and I hope that you can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byerman?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Byerman, Community Development Director, City of Blair. Staff would like to make one possible recommendation for stipulation before we go into discussion and vote, and that is to limit the CUP to Rapid Response only and not have the CUP run with the land.
Repeat that. What was that?
That the CUP run or be limited to Rapid Response only and not run with the land, as the CUP typically does.
I will close the public, oh, never mind.
My name's Larry Roberts, and I live at 2181 Birch Circle in Deerfield.
Spell your last name.
R O B E R T S.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. One, where was your organization before?
Mr. Roberts, you have to address our, dress size.
I just wonder where they come from. I mean, they were too small. Now they want something bigger. What's going to prevent them from getting bigger and bigger? Like they say, no one knows what they're doing down there. So who's going to be watching that? That's one of my questions. And as far as the other, about, they were talking about how Woodhouse, they did something, they got away with it, and now they say they got away with it. Why can't we get away with it? I don't, two wrongs don't make a right, as far as I'm concerned. Anyway, that's all I have. I just wondered.
Thank you. Other comments before I close the public hearing? Having none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have questions of staff? Comments?
I'd like to make some comments.
Okay.
I'd like to address a few of the issues that were brought up. First of all, I'd like to address the concerns about the volunteers not being vetted. The lawns that you have mown by lawn service peoples, delivery, DoorDash, other drivers, other companies that come in, roofing, remodeling, so on and so forth. Most of those are not vetted as well. Many organizations do not vet their volunteers unless you're working with children or something specific that might require it financially or something of that sort. Secondly, of the noise, those of you that live on Joann, you live directly across from a shooting range. And I know that when I worked from home up above you on Mary Beth Circle, I could hear that in the mornings and whenever they fired. In addition, on weekends or on weeknights, my neighbors like to mow their lawns, as we do as well. That creates quite a lot of noise, much like chainsaws. You're going to have continuous things like this that will happen, and I think that you should take that into account. That being said, I do have serious concerns with the CUP as it's currently written, and I think it would be worth our while to perhaps think about tabling this proposal, the CUP, to consider some additional limitations to be put on it.
Can we table the CUP?
You could, but if you're wanting to present this case, you won't make your commitments tonight.
We can discuss it tonight. Yeah. I'd like to make some comments, a little curious, just talking about, you know, if you think about the last 15 years, Amazon basically didn't exist. How many Amazon trucks do we have in our neighborhood now? Sometimes we have three in the same neighborhood at the same time. It's crazy. We have multiple garbage companies in town. We should be a city, we should see, say, maybe we should only have one garbage company in town so we can limit garbage trucks in town. You know, we have a lot of people who work from home now, and instead of them going into offices or manufacturing facilities, all that stuff's being delivered to their homes now. You know, big UPS stuff, you know, that didn't happen before, you know, pandemic. So things change. That's kind of what I'm saying. And we all have to, like, kind of think about it, and it's not, we can't just be stagnant in just how we've always been, because it's going to evolve, and it's going to, might be drones drop, Amazon storefront yards, you know, in the near future, who knows? But I just wanted to make that comment.
Other comments from counsel? I'm sorry, public hearing has been closed. Sorry.
So if we're going to talk about adding any items on to the CUP, I would definitely want to talk about the road. The road would need to be, I think the city said 24 foot, 24 foot wide, correct?
The easement, you're talking about?
The easement, a different road going out north. It'd have to be 24 foot wide. It'd have to be some sort of a hard surface. I don't know those details. But those kind of things, you know, I would say would have to be in the CUP. The city had a couple of their ideas if we went further with this. So those things, that would have to be in there.
Who owns the property that this needed easement would be for? I mean, who owns that property is what my question is. Is it Viscerna? Is it the city? Is it just, okay, it was given 20 years ago, and it's still okay? I don't know.
Staff?
As we looked at the map earlier, Joann Drive ends, it turns into Viscerna property. Excuse me, Viscerna property briefly crosses over a corner of the city of Blair Park and the rest of the road until it reaches the north entrance right here are owned by Kevin Zine's. So again, right here is the roundabout, which is actually on Viscerna property, comes through here, a little bit of city of Blair, back to Viscerna. This is Kevin Zine up into that location right there.
So if Viscerna said, no, you can't use an easement, is it a dead issue?
City considers easements or private contracts through two property owners. If there is an easement, and it is a permanent easement, it was made before, the Viscernas picked this up or at some time. If it does say it's a permanent easement, then they have to honor that. According to what I know, possibly our attorney could correct me if I'm wrong, if there's not an easement on the other property, and they decide, the council decides that they need an easement, that could be part of the stipulations for CUP, I would guess.
I mean, supposedly, somebody had an easement that was given by somebody. Does that carry over?
If the permanent easement's been signed, it would be filed with the Register of Deeds in Washington County. There should be a copy. I have not checked for it. We did a cursory look, but we did not find it. But that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. If it's a permanent easement and it's been recorded, it would be with Washington County Register of Deeds.
Couple of issues on that. In the presentation, you talked about a restricted easement. That is something that is allowed by the Washington statute, however, to actually have ownership, but that is that you need to go to court and have a clear title to that property. So it's not, a restricted easement isn't automatic. It is a null and void, a null and ownership issue. I was concerned when I heard about the permissive use, because a restricted easement is on a man's possession. It has to be a notorious open, and so I'm concerned if it was actually a permissive easement, that might not even qualify for a restricted easement. So at very basic terms, it's just a title search, or the easement, it sounds like there's maybe not permanent easement, but also it sounds like there may be, whether it's a restricted easement or a mis-easement. A big question in my part. The other thing about a permanent easement, it can also have restriction, it says, it's for residential purposes or something. So that, and we're just talking about that, they're not so sure, without looking at that easement itself, you're not going to know whether it allows what type of use it has. So it's not automatic, it's because it's permanent, it's recorded, it says, no, it's public, so it makes a lot of difference on if it's a restricted or a non-specific one. So I think, before you really, I would suggest, before the CUP would be entered, you had that title, and I guess the other piece of that would be just giving enough time to do that before you, under the Rapid Response activities that occur to not be happening, if you're sure.
Yeah, I would recommend strongly that valid easements be in place for the entire easement area between the two owners before the CUP could take effect.
Because it does no good to asphalt it or pavement, as Kirk said. Because it does no good to asphalt it or pavement, as Kirk said, 24 foot wide paved or asphalt, as Ken mentioned earlier, if it's not even their property, if you're like, "I'm going to go pour concrete on somebody else's land and call it my road," that's not going to fly.
Or lose the right to that, that's what I'm saying.
That kind of hinges everything on, I mean, I don't think really.
And as Kirk said also, that the, again, before the CUP is valid, that the 24 foot wide gravel drive be improved, or that it be improved to those standards. I think it would be, if they make those changes, I think it would be, then if they've made that investment, it would not be unreasonable to maybe not grant a 10-year CUP, but perhaps a three-year CUP, or some other number that would be agreed upon, to again, allow them an opportunity to show what kind of neighbors they're going to be are. I think it should be greater than at least one or two year if they're going to put that sort of investment in. But again, that'd be contingent upon first getting the easement settled, second, be having the road improved. It might also benefit to have your address changed to Joanne Drive, because then that also lets your volunteers know that when you put information out, publications, so on and so forth, it would be on Joanne Drive, and that would maybe give them more direction to go that way than rather through Deerfield. Well...
That is not a public road, public hearings cannot.
Sorry.
Your portion of this.
I'm making a motion.
Joanne Drive, I believe, is a public street up until the cul-de-sac. That's what I'm saying.
Not engaging.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Correct, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I want to say something real quick, and I appreciate what everybody said, you know, both sides, very passionate, and nobody questions what you do. You know, the ministry that you do throughout the country is admirable, and a lot of people benefit from that, right? And I applaud you for that. I, to me, the noise and everything else are just peripheral to what the real issue is for me, is whether this business should be located where it's at. And although I applaud what you do, I, I don't see that as the best fit in that area. I don't. I think there are other places I could probably be better. So I am against a conditional use permit because of that, the precedence that that would set. I just want to explain that to you, so.
Kevin, I'm going to agree with you all the way, and with that, I'm going to make a motion to deny the CUP for Ken Gerber and Omaha rep response.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit? Please register your vote.
Councilmembers present a voting aye. Clark, Fletcher, Wong, Folsom, Willis, Councilmember Banner, and Krieger, voting aye.
Conditional use permit has been denied. We're going to take a short break.
You have high school kids.
I know. These high school kids have been here for two hours. Bless your hearts, you get extra credit. So, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene here in five minutes. High school, come on up, we'll sign for you.
It's probably right out here in the parking lot. As soon as that door closes, we'll start. Item number six, I'm going to open a public hearing to consider amendment to the City of Blair zoning regulations, Article eight, Section eight oh one, Agricultural Highway Commercial District, eight oh one point zero four, exceptions, storage indoor and outdoor, removing this quote, "This use shall not be permitted on lots with highway frontage." Mr. Bierman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, second Planning Commission carryover from the meeting earlier this month is this change in language to ACH. And it comes about with the fact it's just a little bit confusing. Soon as Eric gets the microphone up here. Oh, sorry. My apologies, not Eric. Jake.
Thank you, Chief.
Anyway, Article eight, eight oh one, under exceptions, storage indoor and outdoor, we were looking, asking if this use shall not be permitted on lots with highway frontage being removed from the regulations. Planning Commission heard this and they did recommend approval of this, eight to zero. The reason of this is, right now, these are two descriptions of what storage is. We have storage units mini, you can read it up there, you know, two square feet. Then we have storage indoor and outdoor. And this allows things like RVs and stuff outside. And, you know, there are the rules, it should be by fences and stuff. Well, under ACH, highway commercial, eight oh one oh four, one of the exceptions, number five, it does allow storage units for mini. Number twenty, under exceptions on the long list, it talks about storage indoor and outdoor. And again, we're looking at trying to remove this use shall not be permitted on lots with highway frontage, because most of ACH is highway frontage. And so, we were talking about this with the intent being primarily for application in these areas. We actually had a couple of Planning Commission members say, as we talked about, storage indoor and outdoor, that it was getting removing, sorry about that, removing this. They were saying, well, doesn't this mean, this, the whole use, number twenty, should not be used when it's next to a highway? And we were like, well, no, we took it to mean that outdoor storage should not be used next to a highway. So, it creates confusion there. The bigger thing about this is, this is already a CUP. Planning Commission and council already has the right to say, this is a good idea for, for outdoor storage here, but it's not a good idea for outdoor storage there. So, by using, by leaving this in, this use shall not be permitted. It's already taken away of the power of the Planning Commission and the council to really decide what should be where when somebody asks for a CUP. So, again, what we are asking is that this use shall not be taken away. This is the red line version struck from this. Because if, again, not to repeat myself too many times, if it's near a highway and nobody wants it by highway frontage, the CUP already has the stipulations for that. Just quick, a little, a couple areas here. This is on East Highway thirty by Industrial Road. This shows outdoors or mini storage units here. From the highway, this is what we see. This is an area on the US seventy-five, just south of the Ten Street interchange. And this is what you see from the highway here. Then this is on South seventy-five, across from the Supra Eight north of the ballpark. And it shows the area here, what you can see. So, again, these areas may or may not be good for outdoor storage, but that could be up to the CUP without, unless the instructors, no chance even to ask for it. Any questions for staff on this?
I was concerned about this, just because of the outdoor portion of it.
Right.
But the initial use permit is still.
It's still a initial use permit.
Valid thing, just because I'm okay with indoor storage being along the highway frontage, but outdoor storage, I have a major concern.
Right. And as we've said before, some things are allowed in some areas, but they may not be the best fit for other areas.
Any other questions for staff? Do you have any comments from the public?
Hi, Jeff McGregor, MCGREGOR, one one seven five zero, Stonegate Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. One of the first properties that was on there is lockbox storage along Highway thirty. That's a property that I own. And I would be a proponent of amending this text amendment. In the future, I'd like to be able to come and present to you an option to do, offer a CUP for outdoor storage, as we already have indoor storage. Obviously, with the concerns the mayor's expressed, going into great detail about what would be allowed to be. Sorry, whoa, sorry.
Just come closer to the microphone.
Yep, sorry about that.
Thank you. That's all right.
Sorry, I could hear myself pretty well. But, uh, but, and concerns that the mayor has about, you know, what would be stored out there. And outdoor storage is very vague. And the ability to come before you later on with a very defined outline of what specifically would be allowed and, and the condition that it would be allowed would be something I would really enjoy being able to come and present to you later on down the road, should this pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Do you have any comments in writing? Thank you. Right, we'll close the public hearing.
I'll introduce ordinance twenty-five ninety-six.
And ordinance to amend Blair City zoning regulations, Article eight, amending Section eight oh one oh four, agricultural highway commercial district. Exceptions fulfilling all orders corresponded here with the conflict with providing essential compliance effect. The public should pass them forward.
I move the statutory rule regarding reading on three different days be suspended for consideration of settlements. Second question.
The question before the council is, shall the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended? Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye. And ordinance to amend Blair City zoning regulations, Article eight, amending Section eight oh one oh four, agricultural highway commercial district. Exceptions fulfilling all orders as a part of the contract here with providing this order. Shall be in full force and effective, the public should pass them forward.
I move final passing ordinance, number twenty-five ninety-six. Second. Question?
The question before the council is, shall ordinance number twenty-five ninety-six be passed and adopted? Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
I declare ordinance number twenty-five ninety-six duly adopted. Item number seven, consider approval of an annual dollar amount to provide employees, full-time, permanent, part-time, council members to use in the City of Blair's online branded store. Mr. Ghul.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you is a motion to ask, um, let me back up. As you guys maybe remember, KSM Promotions is the company we went with, or we decided on for city branded clothing. And that could be cups to long, nice button-up, to a quarter zip, to a nice cardigan, right? So, we have plethora of options. Um, tonight, Phil has put aside money in the budget, which was already approved. Uh, we're asking for, or at least presenting three different options for you to decide on how much an annual allowance will be given to full-time employees and part-time employees. So, tonight, we've just put before you three different options. Um, a little bit of background on these three options, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. Just kind of three generic numbers, kind of grabbed it out of the air to present to you. Phil has budgeted for the max amount, just not knowing, again, what that decision was going to be back then. But just so you are aware that there is money set aside for this. Um, what I did, and what you'll see, is I showed that with all the positions we are going to be fulfilling for this fiscal year, as well as what we have, plus the permanent part-time. And permanent part-time, we designate as people who work hours twenty, twenty hours per week, up to twenty-eight hours. So, that's fifty percent of the week, up to seventy percent of a normal forty-hour week. What we're going to do tonight is, whatever number that you decide for full-time employees, we are going to designate sixty percent of that dollar amount. So, if you choose a hundred dollars per full-time employee, our permanent part-time will receive sixty dollars for their annual amount, um, for this online store. Um, as you see too, I wanted to remind you what that looked like, again, that logo, our branding apparel logo. But, um, I have a kickoff call with the store tomorrow. So, I'm really excited that hopefully next week, everybody can start going on and selecting what they'd like. So, again, tonight, just selecting one of those options, or a different option, as you so choose. Any questions? Yes, sir?
That's to be used in the calendar year, not carried over, correct?
Um, it can be carried over. That, I don't know if that's something that, um, I remember us deciding on. We can decide that right now. But we have the option to either carry that money over or not. I will say, real quick, is that the apparel amounts, the dollar amounts per item, um, are, can range from anywhere from fifteen dollars up to like ninety dollars, depending on the type of logo, of brand of Nike, Eddie Bauer, just to Guild, Guildland and some of the other brands. So, we were looking and deciding, should we allow the rollover for next year? So, people can save up to purchase maybe that bigger, larger item, or dollar item, so.
But would there be an end, like, kind of like do it for two years instead of going ten years? If you had a hundred for a thousand dollars?
That would be nice.
I mean, I mean, really.
Yeah, I mean, I should add. Technically, technically, the city won't owe anything. So, let's just say there's a thousand dollars in somebody's store. The city isn't out a thousand dollars until they use it. So, yes, that could happen if, for someone who stays here for ten years, doesn't use a nickel of it, and could carry that up to the max.
You want to use it, you're budgeted though.
Okay.
I don't want to carry it over.
Yeah, I would say no carry.
Okay, no carryover.
Finance Department has, uh, the county decides to count this.
Okay, perfect.
What was the agreed amount of the budget?
Uh, the hundred dollars, ten thousand.
I think based on what we talked about with shipping, that you almost need the hundred dollars. If you didn't anything less than that, then the employee's going to have to get paid in pockets.
And if an employee wanted to purchase something that was, you know, two items that were totaling one-twenty, they'd put in the difference, correct?
Correct. Yep, yep. Correct.
I think a hundred dollars you're giving out of those. As far as state here. Make that note.
Use it or lose it.
Christmas is coming.
Would you like to put that in a motion?
So, you want to approve a hundred dollars of the online branded store?
Yeah. Yes.
Per employee, uh, per, uh, budget here?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual dollar amounts, I have to say the hundred dollars, for full-time, uh, permanent, part-time, and council members to use in the City of Blair's online branded store.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the annual dollar amount. Please register your vote. It is nine forty-six. Motion passes. Item number eight, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-three, amending the city's four, five-seven deferred compensation retirement plan to allow up to a four percent match for fiscal year twenty-six, and an increase, and increase the match to five percent for fiscal year twenty-seven. Mr. Ghul.
Uh, I apologize, last time I didn't say, "Good evening, Ben Ghul, HR manager for the City of Blair." Uh, tonight is just a resolution.
Generalist.
Generalist, true, generalist, generalist, HR generalist. Thanks, Kirk, thank you. Uh, sorry. Tonight is just updating our, our plan documents, just to reflect the changes that we selected, again, from the CAT Committee and the Finance Committee recommendations earlier this year with the budget. So, it's really just language update for matching our employees' contribution to four fifty-seven, starting October one, twenty twenty-six, to four percent. Next fiscal year, October one, twenty twenty-six, would then start to match at five percent. Again, bringing the total match between our two retirement plans for civilians up to nine percent, which then would then match the state requirement for our police officers, which today are contributing and matching nine percent. Any questions?
What are other communities our sites, do they match on their plans, do you know?
Yeah, so it, it varies quite a bit. I'm, the, the three to four percent is really what I've seen in the comparability. So, we're, we're right there. I don't know if I've seen many cities yet, start to do that jump to match the police, but obviously, that just happened with the state. So, um, seven percent over both, uh, plans is really that average that I've seen in other communities.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none, Finance Committee.
I mean, we've kind of already looked this over when we were going through the budget process. And I think, at that time, we kind of agreed that this was in step with the plan that we wanted to go, while, along with the police department and so on. So, this last meeting, I didn't see any objections or any reasons to change that course. With that, I'd like to introduce resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-three.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-three was introduced by Councilmember Banner, amending the city's four fifty-seven deferred compensation retirement plan to allow to four percent match for the fiscal year twenty-six, and increase the match to five percent for fiscal year twenty-seven.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-three is presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-three. Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-four, awarding the bid for the installation of the dog park fence. And before you come up here.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and place on file the bids for the installation of the dog park fence.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and place on file the bids for the dog park fence. Please register your vote. Oh, no, you guys are running. Motion passes. Mr. Billsland, now it's your turn.
Mayor, City Council, James Billsland, B-I-L-S-L-E-N-D, park supervisor. Um, here tonight to talk about the bids for the dog park up at Black Elk Park. Uh, we have three bids that were closed. Um, we spoke about these at the park board. And we all agreed that, and recommended that we go with Elkhorn Fence with a bid of twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. This fence will be a six-foot tall vinyl coated fence, um, with two sixteen-foot gates to allow staff, um, to get into service, not only the park, but in the water tower also that's up there. And then there'll be the three gates, the main gates to get in, to the dog park. The main gate to get in, and then the two for the small dogs, and one for the large dogs, so. Any questions for me?
They don't access the water tower, do they?
Uh, yes, there's a gate on the south side of the water tower. Um, and we'll be adjoining this fence up to that current fence that surrounds the water tower.
Any other questions for staff? Sounds like a good-looking fence to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Having none, I believe we did have a recommendation from the Parks Recreation Cemetery Board, and they were in approval. So, how would the council like to proceed?
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-four.
Resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-four was introduced by Councilmember Wilson, awarding the 457 dog park fence.
Okay. I would like to make a motion, all right, they've already done the adopting for the bids. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-four as presented.
Second.
Doosie, that was awful.
I'm trying to pick up the thing.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-four. Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number ten, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-five, approving the purchase of a Bobcat Toolcat UTB for the Parks Department. Mr. Billsland.
Second time here, we are here to discuss the purchase of the Toolcat. Um, we currently use a tractor that is, to the best of my knowledge, fourteen years old. Um, and we are looking for a piece of equipment that will help utilize our ever-growing demands in and throughout the parks and the cemetery. With this piece of equipment, we can utilize anything from the public works that they have for their skid steers to use on our equipment, um, to expedite any jobs that we have to do, make them run smoother, work smarter, not harder, machine, uh, work instead of handwork. So, um, this quote also comes with the bucket and seed driller, um, that will help oversee any parks, any places that we see need to, to help beautify the city. So, um, so we have a recommendation that, uh, we, um, go with Bobcat for a bid of eighty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none, we did have a recommendation from the Parks Board, and they were in approval. So, what say you, council?
I'll introduce. Twenty-two-five dash one-one-five.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-five was introduced by Councilmember Wilson, for the purchase of a Bobcat Toolcat UTB for the Parks Department.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-five as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-five. Please register your vote.
James, there wants your Christmas bonus.
Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-six, approving a bid for a new six-foot security fence adjacent to the water treatment plant to serve as the city impound yard and secure outdoor storage. Mr. Hudson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, uh, so, for the, uh, the impound fence gated area that we really do need down there, um, we got two bids. We recommend that we take the one from acreage fence for twenty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents. That'll give you a six-foot fence with three, uh, strands of bob wire and a remote opener for the gate for the police and the folks that need to get in there.
I'm going to.
Any, any other questions for staff? No?
I want to make the motion to receive and place on file the bids for the usage. Plus, security fence adjacent to the water treatment plant to serve the city impound yard and secure outdoor storage. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and place on file the bids for the new six-foot security fence. Mr. Beryl, can we bring up the map of where this site is? It's east, correct? Thank you. Motion passes.
This is on the, the northeast corner of the water treatment plant with, uh, sewage.
Oh, okay.
Very up to their fence, and we're only buying three sections of fence. We don't have a lot of, you know, we have a gateway, it's energized, and that, so. Access for any to the drivers, we have a contract with the officers. Additionally, placing even some of the robot, or those kinds of access. That's, that's mainly, that's us.
You gotta be big enough.
Yes.
Will it be illuminated at night, or not?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Tom White is looking in, it was security cameras through the area.
And access is through the Optimus parking lot?
Here's the parking lot right here. There's some driveway in there. Take four minutes to walk down. Where do you see asphalt, rain, and sand we can? Our street department rocks.
Really? abundantly.
Okay. So, um, if there are no other questions for staff? Any comments from the public? Having none, Police Committee.
We did meet and discuss this, and we thought this was a great idea, much needed. So, I would like to introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-six. Second.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-six was introduced by Councilmember Wilson, for the approval of a bid for the new six-foot security fence adjacent to the water treatment plant to serve the city impound yard and secure outdoor storage.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Hold on.
I want to make a motion to adopt. Adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-six as presented.
Yeah, you can take it, okay. We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-six. Please register your vote. You know, it's right by the river. I think you can see where the Bertrand went down. Motion passes. I have number twelve.
Hey now.
I think I know somebody that knew somebody.
Uh, yeah.
Consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-seven, approving the purchase of a pickup truck for the operations superintendent. So, I guess that'd be you, operations superintendent, Mr. Hudson.
Yes, so, um, yes, uh, we have two bids, um, Sid Dillon Woodhouse.
No, I don't know if we need to, because it is a state bid, correct? So, we do not need to place on file. No, not this one?
This one wasn't, no.
Okay, sorry.
Did we decide a bid on that fence for the impound? We, we put, put them on file, but didn't we say which bid we were going with?
Yes.
It's in the, it's in the resolutions.
Resolution, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Hudson, before you go any further, we're going to receive and place on file these bids.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to receive and place on file the bids for the purchase of a pickup truck for the operations superintendent. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to receive and place on file the bids for the purchase of a pickup for the operations superintendent. Please register your vote. Motion passes. The floor is yours, Mr. Hudson.
Okay, yes. Again, uh, so, yes, we got, uh, we got two bids, um, Sid Dillon Woodhouse Ford. Uh, we recommend the one from Sid Dillon at fifty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars. Um, also, the, the truck that I have right now with the plow will be going out to, to the airport, um, for them to be, to, to have something out there, as they don't have anything out there now, so. So, before you, you have the, um, recommendation and the price, we just need your approval.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Any comments from the public? Having none, Finance Committee.
We reviewed it tremendously, the better truck of the two. Mark's happy with the equipment, and the truck's going to go to good use. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-seven as presented. Oh, sorry, got to introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-seven. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-seven as presented.
Second.
Sorry. We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash one-one-seven. Please register your vote. It is nine forty-one for the record. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash one-one-eight, approving preliminary engineering services supplemental agreement number two between the City of Blair and JEO Consulting Group for the River Road Connector Trail project. Mr. Hudson.
Yes, so, uh, Phil and CJ met with some railroad engineers out there. And, uh, it's been determined that we're going to need a supplementary agreement with JEO to, for additional, uh, design work of the River Connector Trail. Um, there's two of them. For the railroad, the two sets of tracks.
Yeah, it's mainly the design for the crossings, right?
Crossing, yeah. And it's, uh, it sounds like they're, they think that we get this done, that we're going to be able to move forward. So, um, it was recommended that we approve a supplementary agreement with JEO, an amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents to keep this project moving forward. And with your approval, we will.
Any other questions for staff?
Is, is this going to come out of the funds we have coming from the state?
From the DTAP grant?
Grant.
I think that's, CJ did say something about a grant. That's not a good answer, but I will get that answer for you and let you know in the morning. But I'm pretty sure.
And if they were sure we'd get this thing across the railroad tracks.
Well, it sounded better than what it has been.
They had a, they had a pretty good meeting. Well, they, everybody had to be on the same page, the railroad, Benish Engineering, as well as JEO, so.
Got a lot of rules, Mark. Got a lot of rules to follow.
They, they did do a walk-in on site, but with, uh, the, uh, the, uh, years, uh, with, uh, that's, that's what that was changed. Lay on the plane.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Having none, Transportation Committee.
Yes, we did meet on this, and, uh, it's a great idea, we've been working on this one for a few while, so with that, I'm going to introduce resolution 2025-118.
Resolution number 2025-118 was introduced by Councilmember Clark, approving preliminary engineering service supplemental, according to, to the City of Blair, JEO Consulting Group for the River Road Connector Trail project.
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-118 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 2025-118. Please register your vote.
Councilmember President, voting aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you. No, thank you. We all appreciate all of you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
We appreciate you.
Item number fourteen, consider resolution 2025-119, approving the purchase of Power DMS time for personnel scheduling software. And did the chief have to leave?
Yes, they had a priority call, and he took off and handed me this, so.
Understood. Mr. Barrel.
So Power DMS, uh, if you recall, I think it was the last council meeting, uh, you all approved, uh, the use of this software subscription, uh, for, uh, policy, development, training, those kinds of things. This is for another module of the same, uh, software piece, uh, that is a scheduling software. So those, those operations that we have in the city that provide twenty-four-seven service could use it, it's cloud-based, uh, police department is going to be using it right off, but I could see us down the road potentially having, um, water plant operators run it, you know, those kinds of things, so we could scale it.
It's a very good program.
So, uh, the subscription, annual subscription for this model is, uh, a module, sorry, is five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Any comments from the public? Having none, Police Committee.
Yes, we met on this, and, you know, this falls on what we approved, uh, last council meeting. Further questions, like to introduce resolution 2025-119.
Resolution number 2025-119 was introduced by Councilmember Mike, approving the purchase of Power DMS time for personnel scheduling software.
To make a motion about resolution number 2025-119 as presented. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 2025-119 as presented. Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes. Item number fifteen, consider resolution 2025-120, approving the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford PPV Patrol Cruisers from the state bid from Anderson Ford.
Yes, these, uh, these are on the state bid, uh, these vehicles were budgeted for. The, uh, individual cost of, of each car is, uh, forty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars for a total of ninety-two thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars.
Any other questions for staff?
That's a deal.
What a bargain.
Any comments from the public? Having none, Police Committee.
Go ahead, go ahead. We met on this tonight, and, you know, it's the best thing we can come up with, great price on cars, and they definitely need them, and the, the older cars will go into reserve, and, you know, that's going to work out great. So, yeah, I got to figure all this out. All right, I'd like to introduce. I'd like to make a resolution to introduce approving the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford PPV Patrol Cruisers for the state bid from Anderson Ford.
Resolution number 2025-120 was introduced by Councilmember Mike, approving the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Ford PPV Patrol Cruisers for the state bid from Anderson Ford.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-120 as presented. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 2025-120. Please register your vote.
Everybody's wondering what PPV stands for, it's police pursuit.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Whoa!
You're a serp.
Second.
I just, so Kirk, to answer you, yes, that supplemental money will be coming out of the ground, but we just.
That was fast.
Thank you. We have a motion, had a second to adjourn, please register your vote.
Bro. I'm bad. Sorry for stealing your thunder, Gary.
Meeting adjourned.